Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Pro Tem Melissa Sampson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for leading us in the pledge. Pro Tem Sampson, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilman Bowman.
Present.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Present.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Present.
Councilman Wishart.
Present.
Pro Tem Sampson.
Present.
President McDermott.
Here.
Accord, Ms. President.
Okay, well, we will begin tonight's meeting with a couple of very special announcements and presentations. To start us off in that category, we will turn it over to Deputy Mayor Godbell.
Thanks. If I could get our city clerk to come down. Oh, man. Well, I believe this is the last official meeting that you will be at as our city clerk. And as such, we'd like to present you with this plaque in recognition of your more than 33 years of patriotic and meritorious service representing the city of Westland as a school board member, city council member, state representative, Wayne County Commissioner, and city clerk. On behalf of the mayor and myself, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. Well, the first thing I want to say is that font is so small because there's so much stuff on there.
I need Jim's readers.
Very nice. I wish to say thank you. I'll have, I'll have four or five minutes worth of comments at the end of the meeting, but I do wish to say, Jim, thank you to both you and the mayor. It's been great. Thank you.
And if I could have the entire city council come down, we also have a little presentation for you.
Our last chance to get our license right.
Right. What up there?
Well, good evening, and we also wanted to do a special tribute for a very special person here in our city, our clerk, Richard LeBlanc. This is final, full meeting with us here of the Westland City Council. We're certainly going to miss your insight, your wisdom, your knowledge, so we have a special proclamation to commemorate all of that, in addition to your many, many years, 33, I think I heard correctly?
No, it's far.
Years of service here at the city of Westland at just about every level of government. So, we do the proclamation that counts inside honoring Richard LeBlanc for his dedication, leadership, and service to our community. Whereas Richard LeBlanc has dedicated his life to public service, demonstrating an unwavering commitment to the residents of Westland and surrounding communities, and whereas Richard LeBlanc has served our city with distinction, beginning with his public service journey as a Wayne Westland School Board Member, as a Westland City Councilman, then as a member of the Michigan House of Representatives, representing Michigan's 18th District, which encompasses the entire city of Westland. And his tenure has included leadership roles as a Wayne County Commissioner for two terms, and most recently as our esteemed Westland City Clerk, a position he faithfully held until his retirement. Richard's career extends beyond elected office, including service with the Canton Township and Walton Police Departments, exemplifying a lifelong commitment to public safety and service. And through his dedication, integrity, and perseverance, Richard LeBlanc has made a lasting impact on our city's growth, prosperity, fostering a stronger, more connected community for all of its residents. Now, therefore, be it result that the members of the Westland City Council hereby recognize Richard LeBlanc for his exemplary service, leadership, and dedication to our community, and extend our deepest gratitude for his years of commitment and sacrifice. Wow.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies first, Mr. President.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Leave these first, Ms. President.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from your Westland City Council. Is there anyone on my left? Is there anyone on my right? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will close input on the agenda and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Support.
There is a motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hart. Are there any changes to the consent calendar?
No, thank you.
Any changes to the consent calendar?
I didn't get the question done.
Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
The council has approved the following consent calendar items: the minutes of the regular meeting, the study session, and the closed study session held June 16, 2025; requests from the Westland Professional Firefighters, Local 1279, to collect funds via the Fill the Boot Charity Drive for MDA, July 11 through July 13, 2025, and August 22 through August 24, 2025, at the corner of Wayne and Ford Roads; adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the Westland Community Foundation to apply for a special one-day liquor license for a Christmas in July event to be held right here at Westland City Hall, Friday, July 25, 2025, 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.; traffic control order 2025-02: Add "School Days Only" signs to existing "No Parking" Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. signage on Caseville Court; city hall security guard contract with NAIAS Security LLC for a one-year period commencing July 1, 2025, ending June 30, 2026, in the amount of $60,000; a 60-month lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management regarding the acquisition of four new patrol vehicles for the police department at $1,393.79 monthly for each; adoption of prepared land resolution 33720 Melton, north side of Melton, west of Schuman, this is plan department number 2278; and the last item approved on the consent calendar today, adoption of ordinance 248A119, an ordinance to amend ordinance 248 to show OB Office Business District where I2 General Industrial is now shown in the area within the city of Westland described as 37415 Cherry Hill. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion?
Several.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion for the maker? Any discussion from the supporter?
Nope.
Any additional discussion from the council? Yes.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, Director Adams, I found one thing that I had a question about. He did ask me about this. So, in the vouchers, it looks like under professional, I think it's personnel, let me just pull it up really quickly. Yeah, so in personnel, it looks like there's some conference fees, conference and seminar fees, but it doesn't list like who it's covering. So, I don't know if that's something that we could possibly have in the future, but like what department, but it looks like it's conference and seminars, First National Bank for 254892, 613, 2025. I don't know what department that is and who that's covering.
Through the chair, that is related to a recent conference. I don't have the support in front of me because that is a visa receipt. Those are very difficult to click through at this point, but I can get you the support sent to you tomorrow, but likely it's a registration fee for one of the conferences.
Okay.
That's usually what happens is they'll book a registration fee and then cover any other expense upfront and then seek reimbursement for everything else. But I can get you a copy of that in the morning if that's okay.
Okay. Yeah, is it possible that we can denote? I know that in our last budget, we had kind of categorize, categorized different conferences and where we're spending our money and people that are going, just to make sure that everyone has opportunity to go. Can we categorize like what department or who it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, under descriptions, that is, it will be an easy change to implement.
Awesome. Yeah, right now it's just the date. Yeah, that's all I had question wise. I was just curious, just it's under personnel. Okay, thank you.
All set? All right, thank you, Pro Tem. Any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item one, adoption of prepared resolution approving the brownfield plan and reimbursement agreement for Presbyterian villages of Michigan located at 32001 Cherry Hill Road pursuant to and in accordance with the provisions of Act 381 of the Public Acts of the State of Michigan of 1996 as amended, a public hearing had been held June 2, 2025.
Sir, motion?
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Director Garza, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, thank you, Council President, through the Council President and this honorable body. This is a follow-up from the public hearing that was held at the meeting June 2 of this body. And as the council knows, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority captures certain tax which may be used for, to reimburse developers for blight remediation, environmental cleanup. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority approved this plan for Presbyterian Village for an amount not to exceed $100,000, and this would be for soil remediation, which includes excavation, transportation, disposal, and backfill. And this is a $88,000 plus a 15% contingency not to exceed $100,000. It's a one-time grant from the fund. One question that was brought up in the public hearing last time was from, from Mr. Warren about verification that the remediation happens once this is done. There's a verification sampling in a subsequent report that happens after this is completed to verify that the remediation work has been done and completed once the petitioner has that sampling done. So I just wanted to make sure I answered that question as well from the public hearing.
Great, thank you, Director Garza. And would the petitioner like to come forward and add anything?
Hello, I've been here, I believe, four times now, and this is the first time I get to talk.
Welcome back.
So, it's nice to actually get to address everyone. So, as Alex said, thank you for the introduction. This is a brownfield redevelopment grant for Presbyterian villages. What really we're doing here is just a simple dig and dump of two sites. One is where a 55-gallon drum on the property was leaking. It was empty, and they're going to be doing a limited site excavation around that area and then on the northern property as well. So, this will be a, an estimated 455 tons of soil to be removed, and afterwards that will be, there will be delineation sampling to make sure that there are no longer any contaminants. Any questions?
Yep. And is there any questions from the maker? Anything from the supporter?
No.
Are there any additional questions from the council? Discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes. We got you up here for one more. We'll keep you up here.
New business. Item two, approval of brownfield redevelopment plan and reimbursement agreement for property improvements for the Presbyterian villages of Michigan located at 32001 Cherry Hill.
Motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hart. Director Garza, anything else that you wanted to add additionally?
Sure, thank you, Council President, to this honorable body. This is the part of, the two-part tier that is, allows for the reimbursement. So this will be paid for by the petitioner and reimbursed to the petitioner directly once the eligible activities have been completed.
Thank you. And then anything the petitioner wanted to add?
Nope, this is the pretty standard process. I mean, the developer has to conduct all the activities and then provide receipts, photos, verification that everything's been done to the right standards, and then reimbursed after the activities are committed.
Okay, anything from the maker? Anything from the supporter?
None.
Okay, any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Best of luck, and thank you.
New business. Item three, confirmation of reappointment of Jason Fries to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term effective upon council approval and to expire July 18, 2029.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, support from Councilwoman Rukowski.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Yes, council, Jason's been a longtime member of the DDA, does a great job with the DDA, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here this evening, but was hoping to be, get the reappointment for that position. Thanks.
Thank you. Any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter?
No.
Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Best of luck, and thank you.
New business. Item three, confirmation of reappointment of Jason Fries to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term effective upon council approval and to expire July 18, 2029.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, support from Councilwoman Rukowski. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Yes, council, Jason's been a longtime member of the DDA, does a great job with the DDA, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here this evening, but was hoping to be, get the reappointment for that position. Thanks.
Thank you. Any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter?
No.
Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes. We got you up here for one more. We'll keep you up here.
New business. Item two, approval of brownfield redevelopment plan and reimbursement agreement for property improvements for the Presbyterian villages of Michigan located at 32001 Cherry Hill.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hart. Director Garza, anything else that you wanted to add additionally?
Sure, thank you, Council President, to this honorable body. This is the part of, the two-part tier that is, allows for the reimbursement. So this will be paid for by the petitioner and reimbursed to the petitioner directly once the eligible activities have been completed.
Thank you. And then anything the petitioner wanted to add?
Nope, this is the pretty standard process. I mean, the developer has to conduct all the activities and then provide receipts, photos, verification that everything's been done to the right standards, and then reimbursed after the activities are committed.
Okay, anything from the maker? Anything from the supporter?
None.
Okay, any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Best of luck, and thank you.
New business. Item three, confirmation of reappointment of Jason Fries to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term effective upon council approval and to expire July 18, 2029.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, support from Councilwoman Rukowski. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Yes, council, Jason's been a longtime member of the DDA, does a great job with the DDA, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here this evening, but was hoping to be, get the reappointment for that position. Thanks.
Thank you. Any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter?
No.
Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Jason, thank you. We appreciate your continued service here on the Downtown Development Authority. Short agenda tonight, so we will now be moving on to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting will not be tolerated. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my right, public comment? Yes, Ms. Neal?
Hi, my name is Patty Neal, and I'm co-chair of the Westland Community Foundation. I'm here, I just wanted to elaborate a little bit about our taste of Christmas on July 25, and we hope to see participants both in the city, council, all the administration, as well as any, anybody in the city of Westland or Livonia to come to our event. What our event does is that it supports a Salvation Army, so if everyone brings a toy, the cost is only $25 for food from local restaurants around the area, and there'll be some beer and wine there. And then what happens with the money is that this year, we contributed $11,000 in scholarships to schoolchildren living in Westland, and we also give to the Salvation Army, and they're also going to be there playing their music. So we hope that you come and join us and help support us. Did I miss anything?
Just the restaurants that will be there.
Yeah, local, yeah. So there's local restaurants that are coming as well. So it's a new taste. We usually have it at a different center, but we're trying just kind of a strolling thing, and it should, it's only two hours long, so hopefully you can make it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patty. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Wilson?
To the mayor and elected appointed concerned members of the Westland City Council, I speak as a very concerned resident of Annapolis Park subdivision and the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association, a historic district. We have brought this to your attention numerous times. Now, a new issue has become increasingly urgent for our community, the lack of consistent police review and visual presence within our neighborhood during the reconstruction of Van Born at Henry Rough. The historic district of Annapolis Park is a unique part of the city, separate by, separated by Garden City and Inkster Borders. Our historic designation was granted by the state and federal government as a place of historic relevance in 2006. We have a close-knit elderly community, however, in the most recent weeks, many have observed a notable decline in police oversight and review of activities throughout the area, only showing up for miscellaneous youth fights where over five cars showed up and one truck after the Fourth of July neighborhood fireworks, which are legal. This issue has been brought consistently to the attention of the homeowners association. Also, there is no visible signage directing traffic out of the subdivision, the well-being of our residents, our children, and our grandchildren to the safe place to live, play, and ride their bikes. We have, for the past week on Julius, encountered 18-wheelers, car haulers, car haulers, transports full, and an uptick in speeding vehicles. We have also seen impatient drivers driving across residents' yards to bypass cars lined up to get through. The speed humps provided by the city are ineffective. More should be added or bumps put on Julius Boulevard between Henry Rough and Dancy. Currently, only one exists. I spoke to the council at your meeting on Monday, June 16, which was three weeks ago, and there still has been no addition in speed deterrence. Let me be clear, without any, without sufficient oversight, you risk not only the safety of individuals and families, but also the integrity of the city's concerns for its residents south of Michigan Avenue. We respectfully request that the city council review, with the administration, review current policies and resource allocations related to police patrols and community engagement, not just with the churches. We hope you will consider increasing regular patrols and working collaboratively with residents. Thank you for your attention to this important matter. Now, I have one thing to say personally. Have any one of you ever had to take a sheet out of your house and lay it on a dead body in your front yard? I have. We had speeders come down.
Ms. Wilson, your time is up.
Hit the back of my car and flipped out on my grass and died. So I'm asking you again, do something for us down on the south end. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Your counsel comes, yeah. On my right, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Grunstad. Do we have to give our address or no? Just Westland resident?
Yep, Cheryl Grunstad, we know who you are, Cheryl.
You do. Well, I wasn't going to speak until I heard the word "dig and dump," and boy, that got that, that kind of put a red flag. I'm not going to ask questions about that Presbyterian village because I can do, I'll do my own homework online. Obviously, it's been discussed. First thing I want to say in my short three minutes, beautiful city hall, by the way, is I want to extend my personal congratulations to Richard LeBlanc for his many years of service to the citizens of Westland. An honorable man, an honest man, one of the few. Secondly, I wanted to say thank you to everyone involved with Naked and Transit. For three years now, due to health conditions of my husband and his need to go to kidney dialysis three times a week, we have utilized the service of Naked and Transit to come and pick him up and take him to dialysis three times a week. So I appreciate that. The bus drivers, they're always looking for help. They pay good money, and they get so many holidays off. I mean, somebody should look into that if you're looking for work. Very good service, I appreciate. The only thing I don't appreciate is that I have to drive all the way to the Dorsey down there to get tickets when I have to get tickets for the bus. So maybe somebody could look into some possibility that someone at city hall could also sell those tickets. I mean, you have to call, you say, "I want 100 tickets," or whatever, they're a dollar apiece, and then you go pick them up, they have them ready, and you got to sign a receipt. So that might be a service you could think about. Third, I'm really appreciative of the bulk pickup on recycling days. It's utilized substantial amount in my neighborhood, and I've been cleaning out our garage, and it's been a big plus. So thank you for that bulk pickup priority waste, it's been great to work with. Speaking of in my neighborhood, though, they're repairing the roads, and I don't know whose idea it was to do this patchwork, like we're going to do the left side of the street and interrupt everything, and they got humongous cement trucks picking up the cement, and then they got other bulldozer in the cement.
For three years now, due to health conditions of my husband and his need to go to kidney dialysis three times a week, we have utilized the service of Naked and Transit to come and pick him up and take him to dialysis three times a week. So I appreciate that. The bus drivers, they're always looking for help. They pay good money, and they get so many holidays off. I mean, somebody should look into that if you're looking for work. Very good service, I appreciate. The only thing I don't appreciate is that I have to drive all the way to the Dorsey down there to get tickets, when I have to get tickets for the bus. So maybe somebody could look into some possibility that someone at City Hall could also sell those tickets. I mean, you have to call, you say, "I want 100 tickets," or whatever, they're a dollar apiece. And then you go pick them up, they have them ready, and you've got to sign a receipt. So that might be a service you could think about. Third, I'm really appreciative of the bulk pickup on recycling days. It's utilized substantial amount in my neighborhood, and I've been cleaning out our garage, and it's been a big plus. So thank you for that bulk pickup. Priority waste has been great to work with. Speaking of in my neighborhood, though, they're repairing the roads, and I don't know whose idea it was to do this patchwork, like, we're going to do the left side of the street and interrupt everything, and they got humongous cement trucks picking up the cement, and then they got other bulldozer in the cement to put the new cement in. Well, now, just when you think they're done, now they're going to start on certain patches on the other side of the street. And I got to tell you, you're tearing up the road. The road that you're fixing is starting to crumble in spots, so somebody needs to kind of take a look at that. What sounded like a good idea to be non-disruptive is kind of creating some issues. I mean, I ride my bike every morning, so I'm going to it nicely.
Thank you, Ms. Grunstad, your time is up.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. I don't like three minutes, but you could, anyway, that was it. I concluded. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Is there anyone on my left? Yes, Linda.
Good evening, everyone. Linda Filzetti. I have been watching on social sites, and I know not everybody has access to Facebook or YouTube and stuff, but the communication that's out there right now is people are questioning, why don't we broadcast city council meetings like we used to on television? And I know I brought this up before. I watched another city council, was, oh, go, I think it was Garden City, but I could be wrong. They actually livestreamed their city council meeting. Not everybody has the opportunity to drive at night, or to get into this building, or to be able to come up with questions and that. So maybe going over again, then it's on YouTube, I don't know if everybody can find YouTube. I know you guys do a good job about putting your information out there on how they can contact you, but maybe going over, is there another way? I think there's an app or something like that, but maybe reinforcing for people that don't have the ability to do the electronic social media sites, what can we do to accommodate them? Because it should be accessible to everybody. And I appreciate your time. I hope you have a good night.
Thank you. You too, Linda. Anyone on my right? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Joe Bradke, a Westland resident, 31700 Berchwood Street. My concern or question is, is there any way we can do something? We have a serious firework issue. Westland is getting out of control. You have a time set, I understand, at 11:00 to 11:45 at night. This past Fourth of July, 3:30 in the morning. Off, 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 off. Nothing gets done. Nothing gets done. This is not, this, this year, last year, the year before that. So I don't know how you can go about trying to talk to each other, or make other ordinances or laws. I know there's fines that can be levied. I know the police department cannot be everywhere. They have, you know, that's not a job, that they, they got other stuff to do, but it's getting ridiculous. You know, you have six days of fireworks for the Fourth of July, a seventh if it falls this, this year on a Friday. I don't know if it can be shortened, but I, for one, it, it, it's, I think it's kind of embarrassing. We just had a shooting right near our city border, right there, Warren and Merriman, over dispute over fireworks. I mean, what, is it going to take someone to be shot before we say, hey, we got to make a decision? Like I said, I don't know how it can be contained, and everybody has a right, and I, fireworks are fine, but, you know, 11, you have 12 hours, 12 hours and 45 minutes, you can shoot fireworks. Why do they have to go until like 2:30, 3:00 in the morning? Thank you for your time, thank you for your listening.
Thank you, sir. Anyone on my left? Yes?
Hello, Paul Aaron from ASTI. I just wanted to say something on behalf of Presbyterian Villages. It was brought to my concern that I use the term "dig and dump," and that may be confusing to some people. That is shorthand and an industry term for environmental consultants. What I meant by that was Presbyterian Villages will excavate all contaminated soils in the two areas that were discussed earlier, and then bring them to a type-two landfill where they will stay, and then replace them with verified clean soil. $13,000 of the grant will be spent by the developer for oversight and laboratory costs, so there's no risk to anyone living there. I just want to make that clear to everyone, and I didn't want any misinterpretations.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Anyone on my right? Yes?
Good evening, Brian Schwaisen, a member of local 1279 Westland Professional Firefighters, charity chairman. Just a quick thank you, well, first, a quick congratulations to city clerk, Mr. LeBlanc. It's been fun working with you for all these years. Thank you for all the support, for all of our charitable events and, and attending them. Most of you do the same. Just a quick thank you to you guys for, again, approving us to do this collection. We've been doing it every year since I've been here, even along with, when we were in the merger there. I've been collecting Phil to Boot for the last 23 years. In the last two years, this local has raised nearly $50,000. That's one weekend each year. It's pretty impressive. We always seem to fall just behind Grand Rapids in the state, so I'm shooting for two weekends this year to try to beat them. We've seen tremendous progress. I think 16 drugs over the last 10 years have been introduced with tremendous success. I've seen kids who couldn't hold their head up and live in a wheelchair their entire life, walking with a cane or a walker, able to sleep like a normal child without having to be, have their head propped up and being checked on all night long. So it's been a tremendous experience working with the kids every year. So thank you to you guys, thank you to the fire administration for letting us do this. This is a volunteer thing, we have guys off-duty and on-duty. We, we, we cover each other's calls, so we can collect for a couple hours at a time, so everybody gets to experience it. But most of all, I got to thank the, the citizens of multiple cities, you know, Ford and Wayne Road are pretty busy, and it is amazing how many people give, doesn't matter what kind of car they drive, work trucks, semis, ice cream trucks, you know, broken-out cars, they're giving money left and right. So without them, we couldn't do this, so we really appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Absolutely, you are welcome. Anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Richards. Yep. Take your time, don't hurt yourself.
Hi, Ruby Richards, Westland resident, and I'm coming to you today as the secretary from the Norway County NAACP. Next week, next Wednesday, July 16, they are holding a meeting greet here for the candidates, so whoever wants to come out and sit, it's going to be set up like a speed dating thing, I believe, where they can sit down and talk to the candidates for a few minutes and get up and go to the next one. So if you want to come out and meet the candidates next week, please do so, because it's going to be here. And it's, I don't know if it's going to be in B and C, do you know?
I don't know offhand.
Okay.
Which ballroom it's in.
But it's going to be here.
What's the time?
It's going to be at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
Six to eight?
Yep. 8:30.
Six to 8:30.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Mr. Warren.
Good, good. Well, first of all, from the, as president of the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association, I want to congratulate you on your retirement. In the past, when the southeast needed some things done in regards to the Fraser School, remember the Fraser School? When the city ran out of money, LeBlanc stepped up and got us community development funds to finish that job, although he didn't even represent us. He came to our meetings and got us that funds. Two, left-hand turn signals. I asked our commissioner, who at that time was Hattiest for left-hand turn signals, couldn't get them up from my own commission. LeBlanc stepped in, we have left-hand turn signals now on Don Van Borne, so he's done a lot for our community and respected our community over the past, so we want to say thank you and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Now, in regards to what Ms. Wilson was talking about, is that all candidates, mayors, past, present, and future folks running for council and everything, all talked about public safety. You all talk about public safety, you write it down, but Ms. Wilson comes up in regards to the Southeast Homeowners Association, and nobody steps to the plate. Nobody steps to the plate, but you all talk about it in your campaign literature. So there's a problem there. So I'm looking forward to, hopefully, that you'll keep your campaign promises and deal with the public safety issue down in, on our soft, soft end. Oh, I've got a lot of time here. Now, there's one issue that I want to talk about in regards to the digital signs. I know I struggled in your budget meetings, and now we have digital signs at the fire stations. Great. At the last council meeting, my wife went over to Mr. Brown over there and talked about the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association having some information put on the sign, and he said, definitely no, no homeowners unless it was a city-sponsored event. But yet, I stand out in front of the Jefferson Barn Center, and the Norway Citizens Council has their information on a sign. So there is a double standard here. I don't know who writes the policy, but the policy must change and be equal for, for both entities, or nobody posts there. Okay? So I'm going to need an answer from the administration of who controls the policies in regards to that signage, because it was my hope that entities such as Norway and homeowners could just post the information of where to find us. That's all. That's all we wanted to do, and that was denied to us. Okay? Two, Chief, I'd like to talk to you and your two community officers after the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you, have a great evening, Mr. Warren. Anybody else on my right? And I think Mr. Statchow, so I'll hand up there.
Dan Statchow, Westland, city council. Richard, appreciate everything that you've done for the city. Congratulations for all the hard work and efforts that you've put forward. This evening, I'd like to piggyback on Lori Wilson's issue with the speed humps, bumps, whatever you want to call them. I've had the opportunity to work at various GM plants, helping them troubleshoot issues, and we had issues in three plants that I could name, but I won't, and it was regarding speed bumps and people speeding within GM premises. We went from a two-and-a-half-inch bump to a five-inch bump, placed them closer together, that alleviated the situation. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Statchow. And for old times' sake, I'm just going to say it, is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon to everybody.
Good evening.
And I just want to piggyback on Lori. I'm a resident at, on Julius, and I experienced it. I was coming home, I've been over there owning my home over 25 years. I was coming home the other day, I seen the biggest truck I'd seen in my life come down our street. It was speeding. And right behind that truck, when I seen that truck, I was like, whoa, it's speeding, what it, you know, what it's doing? Right behind that, it was a second truck, almost hit me, and I live there, and that big truck almost ran into me. I also experienced another incident the other day. I was getting off work, parking my car, opened my trunk, getting something out of my truck. I mean, a car came so fast, like it wasn't even in the residential area. I have grandkids, we have grandkids there. They ride, they bike. Y'all must do something about this situation. Don't wait till somebody die. You have to do something. It has to be stopped. No respect, and you know what? If you go slow, like we supposed to go parking, they'll get behind us, I know they done it to me, and start riding the bumper, like, speed up, speed up, speed up. So I'm here today, I'm just asking y'all, please, do something, because we live there, that's our home. We didn't work hard for those homes, and we don't want nobody to die before we get an answer from you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will close public comment and move on to comments from the administration. Deputy Mayor Godbauer.
Thanks. Thanks. I hope everyone had a, a nice Independence Day, in spite of the, the noise of the fireworks. I know they were bad in our neighborhood as well. Just a, a brief comment on that. The city's ordinance mirrors this, the allowable days that the state has. We do not have the ability to further restrict beyond what the state law calls for in regards to days or hours on the fireworks displays. So, and I know, I personally have talked to our state reps and senators in the past about trying to amend that, but so far, there's been no action at the state level on trying to curtail some of the firework days and hours that are currently on the books. I'd like to thank the city council for the reappointment of Jason Fries to the Downtown Development Authority, and I'd like to thank Jason for his continued services. He's a great asset to the community. Wayne County's completed the resurfacing project on Warren Road from Wayne Road to Vinoy, and anybody that's driven down there now can appreciate the vast improvement that it's made on that stretch of the road. Speaking of the concrete work in, between Middle Belt and Merriman, from Joy to Ann Arbor Trail, that will continue through September 12. The project consists of removing and replacing deficient concrete pavement sections and resealing and joint cracks. Work will be completed during normal business hours. Grand Travers, the resurfacing begins on July 9 from Vinoy to Northgate, and is, and is scheduled to be resurfaced between July 9 and July 14. Bancroft Street, Grand Travers to Glenwood, will have resurfacing on July 23. There's a lot of great events coming up in the, the next week or so. This Thursday, July 10, will be the community gathering movie night at Stottlemyre Park, which is at 4801 Dancy Boulevard, at, beginning at 5:30 PM. This free event will include hot dogs, chips, and water. There will be police, fire, and DPS vehicles for the kids to explore. At 7:00 PM, popcorn will be served for the movie Spider-Man Into the Spider-Verse. The Smooth Summer Nights concerts have returned to Central City Park and are from 7:00 and 9:00 PM on July 10, 17, and 24, and on August 7 and 14. Bring your lawn chairs, and there will also be some food vendors on site. Friday, July 11 through Sunday, July 13, is our community-wide garage sale. Sellers, you can register for your event at cityofwestland.com, so shoppers can view your sale on the map and some of the items you'll have available. Saturday, July 12, is Free Family Field Day at Central City Park from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This will be a day filled with outdoor games, including an egg relay, water balloon toss, Mario Kart, and much more. There'll also be a children's entrepreneur market and free entry to the H2O zone following the event. And then, once again, I'd like to congratulate Richard on his retirement, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anything from the city attorney's office this evening?
Very briefly, it's good to be with you all, as always. Just a word of farewell to Mr. LeBlanc. Longevity and institutional knowledge are very important in my business, and Richard's been a great resource to me personally and to our office, and I want to thank you for the camaraderie and the insight that- the camaraderie and the insight that you've had at times. And although you're officially retired, I know I'll still be seeing you around, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Grisco. Before we get to council comments, I will offer the floor to Clerk LeBlanc here.
Really?
Yes.
All right. Well, I appreciate that, and I thank you.
The council is going to pay us all back.
That's right.
Start the timer.
So I'll start by saying thank you to those in attendance tonight for offering thanks to me. Mr. Warren, I forgot all about that left turn. You're right. Yeah, that was something, and it was a pleasure to do that. You know, government service really has, in my opinion, been wonderful. I'd like to say thanks to my family, my friends, my peers, politicians, and also, thanks go to the voters. When I first became a candidate for public office in the early 1990s, I'd already been appointed to a couple of different spots here in the city of Westland, so I wasn't entirely green, but those who have been elected would certainly agree, it's different being elected, and it's great. So, becoming elected that first time in 1992 afforded me the credentials and the experience to become elected and re-elected to five different positions. And I'll say that nobody can do it by themselves. You must have help, and you must return that help when asked. Initially, the political help that I received was from Bud Winter and Vicky Welty of the Wayne Westland Schools, Mayor Bob Thomas, then-councilman Glenn Anderson, and former mayors Chuck Pickering and Gene McKinney. Those folks gave me a lift. You know, they really allowed me to have a chance to learn what it would take to get elected. And aside from the political help, it was also my wife Cheryl, our extended family members, and folks like, and I've got some names here, Karen and Cheryl, Val and Ray, Pam and Tom, Joe and Ernie, Ruth, Riester and Arnel, Jan and Jean, Cheryl and Ron, and so many others came together, you know, for one candidate, which was really impressive. City employees and their bargaining units, fire and police, the UAW, and other organizations, and the newspapers were equally as helpful. And you know, I was thinking about this earlier today, because this is like fresh off the press. Can you imagine that a kid from Nankin Township who attended kindergarten in a one-room schoolhouse near the intersection of Wayne and Palmer Roads at that time would eventually become elected 12 times? I mean, I never imagined it, especially as a teenager. But through the confidence of voters, I've served the schools, the city, the county, and the state, and what a great ride it really has been. You know, we've been a city for 59 years. I've known all of our mayors, all but just a very few city council members, and there was one clerk that I never had the pleasure of needing, meeting, rather. But I'll bet they all felt the same way that I do when someone approaches you in a store or at an event, just to say hi or to ask a question. I mean, it really is something. It warms the heart. And I remember at my first, my 100-day mark as city clerk here in this building, I posted my experiences that I'd had as of that date. The thing that struck me the most was that we have a few hundred people that are employed by the city. Every day, they each work their rear ends off. They do. Sometimes, they miss family events, they miss holidays, but they do it. Some are behind the scenes, the real workers. Others are front and center, but everyone is working. And speaking of city employees, I also wish to thank my clerk predecessors, my clerk staff members, and my two deputy clerks. The role of a clerk's office in the state of Michigan is so different today. I mean, they'll probably say that in 10 years again, but it is so different today than it was 10 years ago, and what we find is that clerk staff continues to excel. They take it, they get it done. In our office, Donna, Mary, Diane, Lori, Akita, Deanne, and Justine, thank you. These are the folks that you don't see that much, but they get the work done. My deputy clerks, first Sue Hoff and today Shannon Inman, made the office better. They made the city better, and a byproduct of that is they made me look better. I mean, the fact is, that's the heart of the clerk's office, the deputy clerk. It really and truly is. I could not have been successful without Sue and Shannon. And I say thank you, because it's a tough job, really. I also wish to thank sincerely the five mayors and numerous city councils I've worked with, both past and present. There's a couple of them in the audience today that we served at the same time. They're our neighbors. You live in town, you know them. You voted for them or not, but you work with them in different ways. In their individual way, every single person that's been elected in this town puts 100% into making us better, making the city better, making things work for us, and I'm thankful. It's my opinion that Westland is solid. We are in a good place, and we are fortunate. So as I wind down, this, I promise, is my last page. I wish to say that as a politician, and I really do like that word, I do. I am one, I've been one, I like it. But it's been fascinating to be able to have access to stuff, to help others, and to get things done. As a retiree, I'm gonna miss that. I mean, I'm really gonna miss it. But as mentioned in the past, I stay and ready to help, just give me a call, I'll be there. No charge, no issue. And I'm only disengaging from the day-to-day stuff. Cheryl and I will still be active, we will still be involved in the Westland community. And though the timing of, I'll call it, our retirement, is a couple of years earlier than we originally planned, it's good. It really is. What I've decided, and what I shared with one of our directors today, this is a young person's job. I mean, it is. It's tough, and I'm not young, pretty obvious. So the timing is good. Public service has really changed a lot since I first entered it, but it's great. In fact, it is fantastic. Really is. I'm as fortunate as anyone, anyone, that I became entrusted. So, I promised to not look at certain people, so I wouldn't lose it. I hope you believe I've done you well, because I think I have. It's been my honor to serve. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. This job really can make you emotional, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We will now begin council comments this evening with comments from Councilwoman Emily Bowman.
I'm not sure how I got lucky one to follow that first.
Big act to follow tonight.
So I'm gonna start there, is, so I want to thank Richard for his years of service. I did not know him all those years of service, but I will say that when I first stepped into deciding that I was going to partake in running as a candidate in 2020, the very first person, my campaign manager, who some people know her, had me meet was Richard LeBlanc.
I remember that.
She said, you need to meet him, right off the bat. So we made an appointment and met with him very early in that time, so that, so I think that speaks to a testament of like, if that's the first person I need to meet in Westland, well, then, that was interesting. So I want to say thank you. I've appreciated the mentoring and guidance and challenges that you've given me before and during this, my role as a council member as well. And you will be missed, and I just, I really do hope you don't change your phone number.
No chance.
I know, right? I know, I got that 303 number too, so. Anyway, so I want, so thank you again. And I also, I want to give a thank you, and I'm glad that our WLND staff, and speaking of the people that are behind the scenes, they're currently, you know, working on this, our production here, so it can be on YouTube tomorrow, and I want to thank you, because I heard that they all signed and are staying with the city. So we've got our entire WLND staff staying on, so I want to thank them all, hopefully that they're hearing this. I also want to mention, a lot has happened in the three weeks since our meeting. I know for a lot of the things that have happened, many prayers have been spoken and tears shed for the tragedies in our community, neighboring communities, our nation and world. As I thought about these challenges, I actually wanted to focus on some of the compassionate stories where I saw, you know, when people talked about, you know, someone that they found, you know, two girls up in a tree in Texas that were recovered or rescued, and, you know, the stories of, at the church, the stories where, you know, just the things that happened, the coincidences. I really appreciate the video by Pastor Bobby Kelly, who, he asked, what he asked for people to do was simply to write notes. He's like, you want to help? Write notes that we can line our walls with encouragement and notes and letters and just, you know, just anything, just line their walls. And so I shared that with a number of my friends, and especially some that had like daycare centers and things like that. I'm like, how cool, you know, because he said, that's what they need to see. They need to see that there's still, you know, as they go through these traumas, and I just, I think about that when, you know, from a mental health perspective, from everything, that it is truly, I think, you know, the comments were made about, you know, who's lifting you up? Who are you surrounding yourself with lifting you up? And it just, that just really got me thinking over the last, I mean, because there's been so much that's gone on, that I just, you know, whether it's supplying food, or water, or shelter. So there's a couple thank yous. I want to thank our Westland Police and Fire who helped with both the incident in Wayne, and then I know of Romulus, the loss of a fireman there, I think I said that right. And then, just want to thank them. I do want to thank Nankin Transit, I know they were mentioned. They were actually part of the help with the church. They were, they transported people off of the grounds, I don't know if people knew that, but they were there, you know, right there when they needed to be there on an off day. And I think that, so we've got these services, we've got these things in our city that where people are coming and helping, whether it be local, whether they're our own, or, you know, outside of that. And I just, I think that that is really encouraging to see all those stories of compassion. So I just, I just want to share that, and I'm not going to remember everything that I wanted to talk about on that, but I just wanted to speak on that. Along with that, I do want to mention, you know, I know it's summer, and with more people outside, we're interacting with other people, with lots of people, our neighbors and things like that, and I know whether it be something like fireworks, or we're not, you know, we're not agreeing with our neighbor for whatever reason. I actually did speak with Chief Dolly a little bit about some things, you know, just little or big incidents in our neighborhoods, and the idea is, you know, I hope people call the police. I hope they're calling and asking about our community police officers, asking about our behavioral health specialist. These are people that are there, that are trained to help, whether it's a dispute, whether it's a disagreement, you know, if you know who's putting off the fireworks and you don't want to confront them, then call them and ask them. I've done that. I've had issues in my neighborhood where I'm like, for some reason, I'm just not comfortable talking, maybe I've heard something, I'm just not comfortable talking to that individual. So I have called for help and say, can you, you know, do something? Because that's the services that I want to be paying for and working with, and knowing that they are there for our community, and that they're there to make sure that we can live and work together and play together, whatever we're choosing to do together. Because, again, we're not going to agree, we're not going to agree with all our neighbors, and I know that. And I just, I just want people to know that the services are there, and I just kind of, I chatted with him a little bit more, and whether he can share more at some point. But I do want people to think about that, that they're there for mediation, if there's a disagreement and things like that. Just encouraging that. And I think I'm going to close with a reminder about the businesses on Wayne Road that are still needing our support. I did just have, I had a little thing at Homestead Kitchen, and, you know, trying to bring people, and I love when I bring, you know, I love when I have events there and someone says, I didn't know about this place, and I'm like, well, please come back. You know, so there's a lot of businesses on Wayne Road that are still struggling. They need to make it through the summer. I'm encouraging people to, you know, remember them, and there's other businesses in our city, just, you know, this is a time where we just, since we are out and about, support those businesses, so. And I think that's all for my comments today. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bowman. We will now hear from Councilman Delano Hornbuckle.
Thank you. I guess first of all, I want to say thank you for all you've done. Thank you for what you taught me, always being professional, always being willing to work with others, and always being open to hear from other and help others. So I want to thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
I don't want to make you cry no more, but.
I'm sissy.
Hey, join the party. But I appreciate everything you've done for me and everything you taught me. Also, I want to share a quote I learned today. It says, "It's easier to smile." But with this next thing I want to bring up, it's very hard to smile. I want to first say, Lori, I'm sorry. Warren, I'm sorry. I didn't catch your name?
Gertie Bates.
I'm sorry. Southeast homeowner, I'm sorry. Phil Phil Glaze, I'm sorry. I have been emailing the mayor, the city council leadership, for these roads. Today, I'm a little upset, but today, I'm going to ask my city council members to help me with this. We need to get something down there. There's too many people asking for this. I've talked to residents over and over, we have people come here all the time. So I'm asking for your help, the administration's help, let's find something to solve this problem before it gets even worse. I hate that it got to this situation that we seen and I'm just learning about today, but I do need your help to make something happen down there. Also, I want to bring up Mary McLennan. She passed away not long ago. She was definitely a staple down in that area, staple in our community. She's been around a long time, so I want to give my condolences for that, for her loss as well. Also, I want to bring up double LND. I brought this up to leadership. I'm a little disappointed that it didn't come up on the agenda so we can have some dialogue and let the community know what happened. I'm not going to go into it, I already let leadership know, and they said they will talk more about it once the time come. I want to give a shout out to two community churches in the area doing a lot of great things for our young kids, Community Free Will Baptist Church and the Gateway Family Worship Center. They have a lot of great programs for the kids that are free in our area, so if you could check it out, it's free for kids, and it's a good summer camps for kids to get out and burn out some energy and have a good time and learn. And most importantly for me is the kids getting to socialize and being able to meet other kids as well. Last thing I'm going to bring up is July 15th is my third courtside chat. I have a courtside chat the third Thursday of the month, right here at Wickle Pickle, located at 36871 Warren. It's at 1:30. It's an opportunity for people of the community, city council is invited, anyone is open for anyone to come chat, get to know who I am on kind of a personal level, and also play pickleball for free for two hours. So if you just want to come learn pickleball for free, feel free to come by and join me there. What else do I have here? Please follow me on Facebook, Councilman Delano Hornbuckle. You can also reach out to me, catch me on cell phone at 313-415-4096. And I think that's all I have for now, and I'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Hornbuckle. We will now hear from Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. So, a couple things that I kind of wanted to touch on, and everybody's got their own little items. The fireworks, you know, it was an absolute nightmare. I think, I've been on the council coming on eight years, and I think I've complained about them every been on the council coming on eight years, and I think I've complained about them every year, you know, in front of everybody here, and it's always been kind of, I want people to have a good time, but I want people to be safe. I also want my veterans to not be suffering from PTSD, I want my dogs and my neighborhood pets not to go ahead and freak out, I mean, our Golden, we have to, we have to medicate her heavily during this time, because she just has a really hard time. But I also worry about property damage and injury to other people, and that's kind of the big thing, right? What goes up must come down. These pyrotechnics that we're setting off, they're more and more powerfully, powerful these days, and they're so pervasive and available to the general public, I mean, you just have to be 18 years old, and you can go ahead and set off, quite frankly, an explosive device that could kill someone, and without any license, without any training, and, again, every year I've complained about it. My son, as a matter of fact, he was out of town with some friends, there were people next door, a few days ago, setting off fireworks, one of their mortars fell over and struck my son and his friend, and concussed them, they had to spend the night in the emergency room, and, and still, these things keep happening, and the problem is, where the deputy mayor spoke, you know, and he was on council for quite a while, he and I were vocal about it, our hands are tied, this is a state law, that we, that has precedence over anything that we do, they're allowed to set this stuff off, and every year since that time, when they've made it legal again, because it was illegal, then the state opened it up, and let it go carte blanche, and that's when these fireworks tents that you saw, that were selling sprinklers, and black cats, and the little tiny things, now we're selling high explosive ordinance, okay? Quite frankly, some of the stuff the military, we used to play with, and some close power to that. And the answer is, the state's got to get involved at this point. We're happy to join our voice, I will speak on behalf of my council, maybe I shouldn't do that, my colleagues, I'm happy to join voices with all of you and talk to the state, because they have to do something, it's their law, we can't override it, we have to allow them to do it, and since it's been widespread and completely allowed, I think if even we had four or five times as many police officers that we have on our books on duty that night, they still would only get 10% of it, okay? It's not something they can physically manage, they can't, I mean, they just absolutely can't. Chief, if I'm wrong, you tell me I'm wrong, but I don't think I'm wrong on this one. So, it's a big, long way of me saying, I'm not saying it's not our problem, it's out of our hands, we can't stop this, it's gotten too big, and we would need state involvement to go ahead and rein this thing back in. I don't like knee jerk legislation, just like anybody else doesn't, I try to be balanced, I try to be pragmatic, I like people to exercise their individual freedoms, but when people are getting hurt that weren't doing this thing, and setting these things off, if you guys don't know, we had a fire over the weekend too because of it, okay, we lost a structure over at Cherry Hill in Wildwood. One of my friends called me, says the garage behind us is fully in flames, so, well, we had some sort of fire, okay, and someone called, a friend of mine said, "There's a structure on fire," okay, so, but things have happened, and the state's got to get involved, so, you guys, let us know, but you guys got to be calling your state representatives, you guys got to be calling your state senators too. We'll, we'll let them know, but your voice is too, it's going to lift that up. Secondly, I kind of, I'm glad Councilman Hornbuckle really took a good approach to that, I had something to say, I think he addressed it better, because you're more pointed, but to the council leadership, with regards to the neighborhood down there, with regards to the traffic and the safety, we want an action plan from the administration, I'm asking for an action plan from the administration, I want something that is, that is tangible, I want something specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time bound, I want some smart goals and an action plan, that's going to be able to tell us, the council, what's actually happening, because when residents are asking us, and we sit up here and we go, "I don't know," we don't tell the police what to do, okay? The police department and the chief doesn't work for the council, honestly, all right? And I don't know if the police can do it all by themselves either, but I think we've heard enough, that we got to do something, because more of the same just isn't working, and I need to be able to communicate with my constituents, we need to communicate with our constituents about, "You've told us, you've told us, you've told us, nothing's happening, it's getting worse, what do I say?" Right? So, I need an, I need an action plan from the administration, council leadership, please share that with us, so that we can communicate with the people who contact all of us on a daily basis for different items, thank you. Lastly, Mr. LeBlanc, I met Mr. LeBlanc 11 years ago, when I started being very active in the local Westland area, JCs here, I was the president in 2015, so it was 10 years ago, and we met, and I remember, one of the things I was doing in the JC chapter at that time, was trying to reignite civic and political elected engagement at that time, and I had a hit list. I wanted to meet with the mayor, I wanted to meet with the council president, and the council, and I wanted to meet with state representative at that time, I think you were in the, you were just right between the two, between commission and state rep, but I was told, Richard LeBlanc's somebody you want to meet, and they, they were right. Richard, you've always been pragmatic, you've been balanced, you've been objective, and you've been great counsel. You've also been what I think lacks in a lot of politicians these days, you've always been candid with me. I appreciate people who are candid with me. I appreciate blatant, flat honesty, and if you don't like it, too bad, and you've always given that to me, and it's kind of how I am, and it's rewarding and refreshing to have a conversation with somebody who is elected, but also honest, and gives it to you straight. Thank you for your years of council, thank you for your tutelage, on behalf of the city, thank you for your service, but for me selfishly, thank you for the things you've done for me, the things you've taught me, it's been formative, and it's helped develop me as a politician in my time here, so thank you. That is all, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hart. We will now hear from Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I'm going to segue a little bit from being a JC, because I also had that wonderful experience, and if you're familiar with being a JC, we have, you know, I call it a preamble, which I know it's not, but we have a pledge, and the very last part of that pledge is that service to humanity is the best work of life, and I think that really encapsulates Richard LeBlanc. And 33 years, I think, combined, we will all pale in comparison to what you've provided your community, what you provided to your community when it was Ninkin Township, and what you've provided to the city of Westland. And I am ever so grateful that I get to say this to you, instead of having to wait till a time where we want to eulogize. I, I, I know that's...
What?
No, no! It's, my point is that you get so few times, so few times, to actually tell someone what they meant to you, to their face, while it matters, while you, while they can appreciate your gratitude. And so I want to thank you for your mentorship, I want to thank you for your candor, I want to thank you for your friendship, and I also want to just thank you for your dedication to all things Westland. You're going to be missed, I think, there are some very large shoes for Shannon to fill, but I know that you have made sure that she is wholly prepared to take on that role, so while we'll miss you as our clerk, I think we'll be very pleased, and very sure that Shannon will do a wonderful job. I hope that you get to enjoy so much time with your family, and doing hobbies, and relaxing, I just hope that you get to appreciate moments in life that you may not have been able to be a part of, as you've served all of us, so, thank you, from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
When we talk about the service to humanity being the best work of life, we can always, I kind of lean on, here's the educator in me, Mr. Rogers, who says, "Look for the helpers," and to akin to what Councilwoman Bowman said, talking about leaving letters for people, and people going through their trauma, and different parts of tragedy. And so I think when we look for the helpers, the first people that come to my mind are our police officers, our firefighters. One of the things that was started as a tradition in my family, and I remember, we used to watch the telethon, right, it was a big deal, I don't know, I was, I was in dancing and all of that, so watching the Jerry Lewis telethon was a, was a big thing. I think my parents just wanted to bore me to sleep sometimes, but it was a big thing. And what my parents did traditionally, though they didn't necessarily go fill the boot, but every time a new child was born into our family, they wrote a donation to MDA, and they wrote a donation to the Goodfellows, so that was kind of their, their hope and pledge, that may you never be ill, and may you never be without. So, I would ask for you to think of doing something similar when our fire department is at Fortin Wayne Road, sweating in turnout gear, on July 11th through 13th, and August 22nd through 24th, so we can beat Grand Rapids, it's not a competition, but think about maybe that, that new little life that's a part of your family, and contribute so that these other families that have these beautiful children, going through something so unimaginable, that you really can't fix as a parent, and that's all we ever want to do as a parent, we want to fix it. So, the tradition of fire departments around the country, and their dedication to MDA, and, and filling the boot, has been a decades-long tradition, and the advances in muscular dystrophy would not occur without all of these departments across the country coming together, and, and really taking care of these children. Service to humanity being the best work of life, thank you, Mr. Freeze, for your continued commitment to the DDA, thank you for that priceless gift that you give all of us, and contributing to your community. Delano, I will send an email, I will back you up and support you, you've always had my support, Lori has had my support for that, I think Lori's going on a year and a half, yeah, two years. There have been times she's come up here, and I've literally seen what I want to see a guffaw, or a little snicker come out of people, she's just advocating for safety. We talked about it in our budget session, it's a new fiscal year, it's summertime, it shouldn't be a difficult endeavor, so, whatever the residents need, whatever you need, whatever the council leadership needs, to drum up support, you have my support. And last but not least, while service to humanity might be the best work of life, I believe the very best work of life is being a mom, and so I would be remiss if I didn't say happy birthday, number 11, to my son AJ, so, I look forward to seeing all of you in two weeks, I will miss seeing you every two weeks, I look forward to seeing Shannon every two weeks. I hope you all have an enjoyable two weeks, and success, and not too many storms, and a lot more sunshine, and we'll see you then, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rakowski. We will now hear from Councilman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President, I'll keep this relatively short. Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc, for your service, I first met you when I first got appointed to city council, and I did not realize at that time that you've been doing this longer than I've been alive. So...
You don't change anything. Long time.
No kidding. So, I really want to thank you for that, it's...
Thank you.
That is very empowering to see someone do that for this long, and be such an honored member of our city, so, that's awesome, thank you for answering every silly question I've had so far, and I'm sure that you'll still answer them, even after you leave this place. Let's retire, not move on, if you're curious about that. Next one mentioned about the fireworks, everyone in the city, the few people I talk to on a regular basis complain about them, I found them on top of my roof. People, for the love of everything, please don't burn my, down my house with bottle rockets, I don't want to see that happening, I'm on board for any kind of movement to get this fixed across the whole state. Next I want to talk about what happened in Texas, we're all aware of what happened. Make a small donation, a cup of coffee and costs can go a long way if everyone does that across this country, and gets these people's lives back a measure of stability again. Finally, I want to make a shout out to Petty Officer Roskuski, 26 years old, a fellow search and rescue member, just like I was, first mission, saved 165 people, that is amazing. Most guys I know that were in search of rescue, never make a rescue, at all, and this young gentleman, Petty Officer, made the first one, and a huge one, and changed a lot of people's lives, and is very humble about it, so, bravo to you, Petty Officer Roskuski.
Thank you, Councilman Wishart. We will now hear from Pro Tem Sami.
All right, well, good evening, everyone, I hope everyone had a nice 4th of July, I just continued 4th of July today with my shirt and my apparel. I wanted to start off too with Clerk LeBlanc, I know it's been said over and over, but I can't appreciate you enough, there's been many times, even late at night, I just text you with just basic questions, and you, you never seek to amaze me, first, how quick you get back to everybody, but also just being honest, as mentioned, your integrity, your honesty, your forthright just attitude with, with us, just, that's just not going to work. So, I think having someone that has so much experience, and being truly our parliamentarian is going to be missed within this council, but also just your attitude, your presence within City Hall, everything that you bring to our council meetings too, it's, it just goes to show how lucky Westland is to have individuals like you, that decided to stick around, as you mentioned, elected officials give a lot of time away from their family, if done right, you're at events, you represent your community well, you're accessible, and you're all those things, and more. So, Westland is, is very lucky that we had you on our team for many years, I know that you're going to continue to be Team Westland, and support all your favorite causes, you know, your Autos for Autism, I hope they'll have you back as a judge, I know, I know they're going to have you around, I hope that you'll continue to stay active in Westland, you and Cheryl deserve all the time together to enjoy up north, and, you know, make memories with your grandkids, your beautiful family, and I know it's going to be big shoes, Shannon, but she'll do a great job, and I have your number saved in my phone as Clerk LeBlanc, so it's not being changed, you'll obviously be Clerk LeBlanc to us, so, I just wanted to thank you for your service, and, really, we've only been working with each other for four years now, essentially from the time I started my campaign, but I can't think of just a better resource and individual that I was able to just get information and mentorship, so thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. It has been brought up about WLND, they have signed their paperwork, I wanted to thank Devin Adams, he did leave, so Devin has jumped into the interim role to serve as the Communication Director, I'm going to send an email to the mayor's office, we're not really sure how long this is going to be, but I did speak with individuals at WLND, and they're very, very happy with the support that they've gotten from Devin, it's support that's been lacking, the information's been lacking, but Devin has really filled that gap, so I wanted to applaud him, I spoke to individuals of WLND, and they said Devin had no idea what we do, no idea the amount of time and work and effort that's put into this job, and I don't think any of us really do, to be honest with you, the social media, the events, the photography, the video, the editing, I know it's been brought up about doing like a live broadcast, I, I think that perhaps if things were changed, additional staff, it could be a possibility, but right now, it is streamed on like YouTube after, so they go through, they edit, they put captions in, they put the agenda, and then it's uploaded on YouTube, but it's also on the cable station too, so, if that's something that the administration wishes to bring to city council, we probably would have to allocate additional resources, it is a lot of resource and support for it to be a live stream, it's not just like you turn on a camera and you hook to the internet, it's actually a lot more than that, I know that Director Brown's kind of shaking his head, so he, he gets it, but it'd be a lot of IT, additional resources, I think at one point we had talked about... I think at one point we had talked about it and they said it'd be like an additional $100,000 or better a year, even higher, he's saying higher. So, if that's something the administration wanted to bring to us, but I know from a live perspective, other cities, there weren't even a lot of people watching it live. Most people watched it back. So, we have been like looking into it even for the purposes of having it livestream. It's not something that is out of the question, but I know that the resources, they're so thin, bone thin right now that it wouldn't be a possibility unfortunately at this moment. So, again, I wanted to thank Devin. Thank you, Ms. Wilson and Art Warren for bringing this up. Delano, Councilman Hornbuckle is not wrong, so he did email the council leadership. We sent it to the mayor's office. Both Council President and I were included on it. We have spoke with the mayor's office via email, but I have not gotten anything back. So I've tried calling the mayor's office probably three or four times, didn't get a call back. So I'm hoping that today, we have our deputy mayor here, that he can take this back to the mayor and say, "We need some action, we need a plan." I just want you to know, it's not falling on deaf ears, we're just at a roadblock right now. But I think that you have, everyone up here, we listen to you and we care, we really do. And thank you, Ms. Wilson, for sharing this. I was looking at it with Council President and I don't think I've ever seen a truck this big that was speeding down your street. That's actually very scary. And I don't understand why the trucks would be down your street, but I understand where you're coming from. So, I'll continue to push with the mayor's office and hopefully we can get some response. I'll just continue to send emails and calls and hope for something back. So, thank you. I just want you to know that we are working on it. I wanted to just clarify, so the fire on Biffel was actually a faulty battery. So it was a lithium battery that overheated and blew. So, actually, two individuals that I know both live at the home that was mainly destroyed and the next door neighbor. So myself and Councilmen were over there this weekend, or actually today, right before the meeting, just making sure that they're okay and that they didn't need anything, and they're fine. But it's just going to be a process for them. I think our fire department, which I want to give kudos to, jumped in immediately. They could not say enough things nice about the actual fire that got attended to and the follow-up investigation. They were very thankful. And no one was injured either, so that was a huge blessing. Property was damaged, but that's about it. Also wanted to do one more plug. So it's always been my hope to have some type of food pantry in the city. I just wanted to thank Elmwood Blessing Box. Elizabeth Freeman, she runs Elmwood Blessing Box. It's currently located in Garden City. She has chose to expand with the help of donors and people online and choose Westland. So what she's going to do is she's going to have an operable food pantry. It's going to be at 27543 Joy Road in Westland. And she is very, very excited that there's going to be an open house that takes place on July 15th from 2:00 to 8:00. They're going to have a local food truck, so Hogs Barbecue is going to be out there, a DJ. And then they're asking for anyone that wishes to donate some food to the pantry to come on over and support them. They also are asking any business that is interested in sponsoring, you can do a memorial spot for $150, a community member donation on their wall for $125, or a business sponsor for $175, and it's only like a one-time donation. So, we're really hoping that the community can rally around and support. For the most part, they are donation funded, they are looking for grants, but we're hoping that, you know, the city can support them and wrap their arms around. They started out during COVID in their front yard in Garden City, and they've grown. They have people from all over that support them. So, we're really hoping that Westland can support them and just give them love, and we're very happy that they chose Westland, and they're hoping to open other food pantries. Their main goal is to possibly find a community area or space with a food pantry and actually lease it out for like pennies on a dollar to nonprofits that need it. So, they have some amazing goals, and I just wanted to give them a plug and thank them for inviting me out there and giving me a little peek before they open their doors. So, again, that's Elmwood Blessing Box, which is the location of the new food pantry. I also wanted to just plug the Disabilities Independence Day. It's a lunchtime conversation. It's happening here Thursday, July 24th from 12:00 to 1:30. And we have some great panelists that are going to be here. It's going to be Ms. Wheelchair Michigan, Gretchen Still from STEP, the Marketing Manager, and Diato Smith, the President and CEO of Life Remodeled. So I just invite you to come out. I know that our DEI department does a nice job with these events, but this one seems to be a great, different spin on the lunchtime conversations. I also wanted to just thank everyone that came out and supported the Purpose Hands Nonprofit Event that took place here at City Hall on June 24th. So thank you, everyone that came out and supported that. And I think, oh, Mr. Warren, I'll follow up on the electronic sign too. I don't know what the policy is from the administration, but I made myself a note to follow up on that and see if we can get a policy because I'm not really exactly sure what the parameters were around that. I think our fireworks issue has been handled, so, yeah. So that's all I had for this evening. Our next meeting will be Monday, July 21st at 7:00. We invite residents to come out and join us. I am also sending prayers to Texas. And until next time, be safe and kind with one another, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Pro Tem Sampe. First off, I'd like to offer my condolences to Bishop McLendon on the passing of his wife, Mary McLendon. For those of you that have watched these meetings over the years, you actually recognize Mary as the individual who worked for our County Commissioner Glenn Anderson, who would come up here and provide county updates. And, you know, it was a sudden and sad loss of Mary, and she was, you know, a pillar in our community, not only at the church, but her work in public service for the County Commissioner, for Commissioner Anderson. So she will be deeply and greatly missed by, I think, all of us here and many who watched at home and received updates from her with regards to what's going on in Wayne County. So it's very sad to hear of her passing. I too, like all of my colleagues, want to offer my sentiments to our Clerk LeBlanc. If you can believe it, 33 years ago when he started, the hair on the top of his head was actually brownish color, and now it's 33 years in public service and look what we get.
These eulogies are getting a little bit tiring.
Hey, I'm not pronouncing you deceased at this one, but in all honesty and in all sincerity, the first time I came to a meeting back in probably early 2016, I was just a member of the public, sitting in the audience when I first moved into Westland. Clerk LeBlanc was one of the first people that I got to talk to, and actually, one of the first public servants that I met with one-on-one because we had coffee at Starbucks. And I was actually about five minutes late there and got a text, "Hey, are you on your way?" And I said, "Yes, I am." So, always be on time when you're meeting with Clerk LeBlanc, because you don't even have five minutes to spare. But there, when you sit down with Richard, whether it's for the first time or the hundredth time, you're always learning something new. Because after 33 years of public service, he has a tremendous amount of knowledge and wisdom to impart, and he also has a tremendous amount of, "Hey, we tried that before, that's a bad idea, don't bring that up. Let's do something a little bit differently." And sometimes you don't listen, and sometimes when you don't build a $30 million recreation complex at a middle school, you do listen. So, this city, all of us up here as a council, everybody that you see or don't see behind the scenes here in the city of Westland, and most of all, the residents of the community are going to really be at a disadvantage by not having your knowledge continue on through the clerk's office. But we know that thanks to Cheryl's generosity and sharing you with us, that we'll be able to continue to learn from you and gain insight and bounce ideas off of you even after your service has officially run out here in the city. So, thank you for all you've done for me. Thank you for all the knowledge and wisdom and frank discussions that we've had and everything you've imparted on me. Thank you for your continued service in the community. And one other thing I want to make note of that we have joked about in the past, we may not, even though we have lots of discussions, always agree on everything. For example, he has a poster of Ronald Reagan in his office, I have a poster of Franklin Roosevelt at my house, but we can still come together at the end of the day to be friends and to, most of all, be public servants for all of you here in this community. And his 33 years of service will be greatly appreciated, but also greatly missed. So, thank you, Clerk LeBlanc.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll just put in another plug for the Christmas in July event for the Westland Community Foundation. I've had the chance, when they had this event in years past, to attend it. It is really a great event here in our community, and it really goes a long way in helping support kids and families who are less fortunate in our community. So if you have the opportunity to come out here to Westland City Hall on Friday the 25th at 6:00 PM, please do come out. Make sure to bring a toy for the kids and also $25 to donate, certainly if you want to contribute more. That is always appreciated by the Community Foundation and by the Salvation Army, who you're going to support, and most of all, appreciated by all of the families and kids who will be positively impacted by the Westland Community Foundation's work. So come on out on the 25th at 6:00 PM, right here at City Hall, to support a great cause. Speaking of great causes, I do appreciate Firefighter Schwazing and all of our firefighters at Local 1279 for their annual Fill the Boot Drive. This year, it's going to be, I think, double the fun, as they're going to be doing this on a couple of different dates. Normally, they just do the July event, but they're expanding it into August as well. So, if you see our firefighters out there on the road, first off, please be safe and don't make us have to call the fire department to go and bail out and rescue a firefighter. But also, please roll your window down and put some money in the boot, not only because we want to, you know, get one up on Grand Rapids Fire Department this year, but because we really want to support a great cause in the fight against muscular dystrophy. I know my colleague, Councilwoman Rakowski, talked about the MDA telethon, Jerry Lewis every year. It's one of those things when you're, you know, home as a kid, you're sitting there, it was on WB20 back in the day, you could watch the whole telethon on WB20 or WXON TV20, as it was also known. But I want to thank our fire department for doing this each and every year, and it really is truly a great cause that they do. Mr. Warren, Ms. Wilson, folks who came up here from the Southeast Homeroes Association, I want to let you know that we hear you and we do see you. And in fact, I talked to Ms. Wilson just last week and immediately after that, had a conversation with our Chief Police, Kyle Dully, and I know Chief's been on it as well. And he's been, you know, trying his best he can with the person power that he has over there in the police department to get more patrols stepped up through the neighborhood. And to my colleagues on council, yes, we will work on having a plan of action on this to see what more can we do above and beyond what's already being done by the chief and by the police department. Because certainly, we want this to be resolved. You know, I saw the pictures and I also took a drive through there the other night when I was going down Middle Belt. And yes, I mean, big rigs going through a neighborhood is not okay and is not acceptable. Our neighborhood streets are not designed to handle the flow of traffic from 18-wheelers and the density of traffic that they're seeing down there over the last couple of weeks while the county has been making an emergency repair on Van Born. So we will work with the administration and we will work with one another as a council to develop some kind of, you know, plan of action, something tangible that can be done beyond what's already being done in the neighborhood, whether it's more patrols, speed humps, whatever it may be. You know, and one other thing that I've always brought up when it comes to, you know, public safety, it's not just something that I've said on campaign literature or talked about up here. I've worked to, I think, make a real difference when it comes to public safety, whether it's advocating for our social work program or community oversight with the police department. So I've certainly tried to do the best I can to make sure, or adding an extra cop into the budget, all I can to support public safety and make sure it is just and equitable as well. As was brought up by a couple of my colleagues, Councilwoman Bowman brought this up, thank you. Certainly, our thoughts, our prayers, our well wishes go to the people of Texas who were affected by the devastating flooding and the many lives that are lost and the families that are affected far beyond the loss of life. Thank you for acknowledging that and bringing that up, Councilwoman. It really is a horrific situation and really unexpected flash flooding that occurred in Texas. So, you know, certainly my thoughts go out to all the people who lost their lives and all the families and people of Texas who were affected by the devastation. You know, normally I don't get into national issues up here, but I think, given the impact that it's going to have in our community, my thoughts also go out to the potentially millions of people who are going to lose their healthcare coverage as a result of the big, nasty, ugly bill that was passed. If you're not aware, Congress passed, and the president is about to sign into law, a tax reform omnibus bill that includes some things that I agree with, like no taxes on tips, which are oddly enough, only temporary through 2028, but also includes things that I disagree with, like permanent tax cuts for the ultra wealthy and people who can afford, the wealthy elite, to pay more in taxes. So, I did find it kind of odd that the taxes on tips is only through 2028, but tax cuts for the ultra wealthy elite are made permanent. But what it also includes that I am in vehement disagreement with, and this is why I'm bringing this up here today, is cuts to Medicaid, cuts to people's healthcare, cuts to people's well-being. And there will be residents in Westland, folks who live on fixed incomes, working-class people of low to moderate income means, people with families and children, who are potentially at risk of losing their healthcare as a result of this big, ugly, nasty bill. And, well, we don't know the full statistics on it yet. We know that there are tons of thousands of people across Michigan and probably many families who will be negatively affected by these devastating cuts. And that is an impact on the residents that I serve, because it's my belief that healthcare should be a human right and guaranteed as a universal right. And if we are going to look after people, healthcare needs to be something that we most certainly look after, and cuts to Medicaid are not looking after those that we serve. And I feel that I would be remiss if I didn't at least acknowledge that here and my disagreement with regards to what's happening there at the federal level. Other than that, I think that is about all I have. Last thing I do want to say is to my colleagues who came out to our Pride Month luncheon celebration, I saw Councilwoman Bowman, I saw Pro Tem Sampe, thank you for joining us, and thank you to Pascal and Nicole for organizing such a great event, and for Derek and Samantha for participating on the panel as well. So I do appreciate everybody who joined us there. And if you need anything from me, you can always find me on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott, or you can give me a call or send me a text at 734-890-2146. And with that, is our motion to adjourn.